Good evening and welcome to the February 15, 2011 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Councilmember Quintero, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Coming week will mark Presidents' Day, a day that commemorates and an opportunity for us to reflect on the contributions of Presidents Washington and Lincoln. It was Lincoln who said that, quote, "It is not merely for today, but for all time to come, that we should perpetuate for our children's children this great and free government, which we have enjoyed all our lives." He said this in a speech to the 166th Ohio Regiment in 1864. We pray this evening that we remember that our mission as leaders of a democratic society remains the same today as it did in 1864 and as it did on the day of our nation's birth. Let us pray that future generations will not forget this charge entrusted upon them by the hard-working men and women of our neighborhoods, towns, cities, and states who strive every day to make this nation great. We pray for those who take up arms to defend our nation and put themselves in harm's way for our own security. May their service be completed soon so they may return to us and their families. And most importantly, we pray for our children and their children so they enjoy an America stronger and more prosperous than the one we inherited and have shaped in our lifetime. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the February 15, 2011 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 10, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Presentation and Appointments at 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of February 22, 2011.
Back calling.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. Meetings of February 22nd, there are no meetings for the Glendale Housing Authority or the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. There will be a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and Housing Authority. One item on there is Acting Director of Community Services and Parks regarding requiring financial statements for all nonprofit organizations receiving CDBG funds and new proposed financial prequalification guidelines. City Council Meeting in the evening has a number of items. Under Consent at 5B is the General Manager of GWP regarding the San Luis Rey Water System Improvement Project, Spec. 3433. 5C is the General Manager of GWP regarding Glorieto Wells Chlorination Treatment System Project. At 5D is General Manager of GWP regarding Water System Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Year 2010-11. And at 5E is the General Manager of GWP regarding leasing space on city-owned power poles for the attachment of fiber optic cables. Under Action Items, there's four. At 8A is the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Riverwalk Project Equestrian Redesign Options. At 8B is a City Auditor regarding Election Audit Update. At 8C is the Director of Public Works regarding intention to grant a franchise to Public Pacific Pipeline System, LLC, for the operation and maintenance of an old pipeline, Line 63. And at 8D is the Director of Public Works regarding Safe Routes to School Project. And there is one hearing at 9A is a Fire Chief regarding the 2011 Annual Weed Abatement Program.
Thank you. Next item, please?
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments at Item Number Four.
Okay, any comments? Draymond.
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to turn to Steve Zern from Public Works and thank him for the work that he and his department have been doing on the, what was an ongoing problem, on Linda Vista in the Emerald Isle area. You may recall that we had been asking for some traffic mitigation, some speed control and stop sign, help with stop signs. They've taken various steps up there which seems to be working to some degree. And I also wanted to mention to him that I've received an email from a Mr. Jeffrey Roden, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, or Rodden, on a different section of Linda Vista. Since you're working, seem to be working some miracles on Linda Vista and while you're in the neighborhood, I'll forward the information to you. But I did want to take the opportunity to thank you during the public session for the work you've been doing up in Emerald Isle. This is closer to Chevy Chase. Same kind of problems, though. Stop signs that are just being blown through at high speed and so on.
We'll look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
I attended the Glendale Educational Foundation Annual Banquet Fundraiser. It was very well attended and of particular interest were all of the different, I think it's, I believe it's the first year they've done it, they honored different Glendale graduates that have gone on. One gentleman went on to receive a Nobel Peace Prize. And this young woman, I believe she's 18, is now in medical school back east. So anyway, it was just this, all of these very, very successful Glendale Unified School District graduates that have gone on from down in Distinction. But a great event and I think they raised quite a bit of money.
Thank you. I have a few comments. We heard your complaints about the big rig parking on Ocean View just above the 210 freeway. Those concerns were passed on to Supervisor Antonovich because that is in the, an incorporated county area. And I am told that the signs, I mean, it's nice to be supervisory. It doesn't have to go through a council meeting or anything like that. I'm told that the signs are on order and as soon as they are received and manufactured, they will be placed there which would prevent large vehicles from parking over the freeway. So thank you to Supervisor Antonovich. Next week, we are going to be receiving visitors and guests from Gapon, Armenia. The mayor of Gapon, Mr. Arthur Akayan, will be visiting us in the city of Glendale and he'll be spending several days here touring different departments, observing how we run our municipality so smoothly and efficiently. And we look forward to receiving him and I think we'll actually be bringing him up, introducing him to the city at our council meeting next week. Lastly, not to toot my horn, but tuttlu. On Thursday, this Thursday, I will be recognized by the Move LA organization. I think we have a graphic for that already. They are having a Valentine's celebration but essentially honoring Senator Boxer, Congressman Harmon, Richard Katz, and myself for our efforts in moving regional transportation, in particular, the 30-10 Transit Plan, which envisions constructing and completing 30 years of transportation projects in a 10-year plan. We're still working on that. A lot depends on financing from the federal government, but in essence, it boils down to the voters of Los Angeles County who voted for the Measure R Half-Cent Sales Tax Increase in 2009 to advance that money, more or less bond it, and to bring it forward so we can get these transit projects done. This is not advancing the 710 Tunnel in any way, but the very clean and friendly and forward-looking sustainable transit projects such as the subway, the West Side Subway, the downtown connector, and the transit lines to the airport, et cetera. So that is very fun and I'm glad to be represented and honored, but it's really the people of Glendale, I think, that put me there. So that is going to be a little bit of fun on Thursday. Are there any staff comments? Mr. Kosakian.
Just wanted to make a quick announcement about the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which this year is going to be held on Thursday, March 10, 2011. Again, that's March 10 of this year, which is a Thursday, at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. 6:30 a.m. is when it will begin. Breakfast is served at 6:30. Program begins at 7:00. Doors open at 6:00 a.m. And this is a 48th Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. The keynote speaker is Lisa Bowman, singer, dancer, actress, sports radio personality. A wonderful person to hear her inspirational message with the theme "Rejoice." And there will be musical entertainment, our own Rosemont Middle School String Ensemble, along with the traditional bag piper, which is at every Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. And if you're still drowsy, nothing wakes you up at 6:00 a.m. like a bag piper. So encourage everyone to attend and if they want more information, they can call 626-298-3078. Again, that's 626-298-3078 and the information is up there on the screen.
Okay, thank you very much. There's nothing else? Let's move on to the next item.
Next item at 5 is Consent Items. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
There's a card to pull 5C.
Mr. Mayor, the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Please read 5C.
Item C is Acting Director of Community Services and Parks regarding startup costs for the Pacific Pool and operational expenses for three fiscal years. At C1 is resolution appropriating $1,177,000 to provide funding for startup and operations related to the operation of the Pacific Pool in fiscal year 2010-2011 through fiscal year 2013-2014.
I have one card from Mike Mohill. Mohill unfortunately is not here. I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
This is the one I voted no on all along, so I better say no.
No.
I've been against it the whole way.
Councilmember Weaver, no.
Yep.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Yes. That concludes the consent calendar. Next item, please.
Next item would be Oral Communications.
And this is the three-minute section of oral communications. Those wishing to address the council may do so for up to three minutes on items of community interest. I have two cards, Linda Burns and then Leon Mayor.
Well, good evening, Mayor Najarian, City Council. I'm wearing two hats today. The first one is Arbor Day. And as Vice President of Glendale Beautiful, for 61 years now, we have had tree plantings and we've encouraged anyone to purchase a tree either to honor or in memory of someone. Glendale Beautiful, in cooperation with Community Services and Parks, invites you and the community to join us for Arbor Day. The celebration is Tuesday, March 1st. The social's at 10 o'clock. The program's at 10:30. And it's all going to be held at the Casa Adobe de San Rafael, which is located at 1313 Dorothy Drive. If it rains, and it has, we go to the lower level of the Civic Auditorium. We party down there. The speaker will be Jeff Weinstein, and I'm having trouble with this next part, who is the Trails Open Spaces Specialist with the city of Glendale. He is currently working on restoration efforts at Duke Mage and Wilderness Park. Our city manager, Jim Starbird, will be presented with Tree City USA Award. The city of Glendale has earned this award for 27 consecutive years. I think we're full of trees. Public Works, I guess with Mr. Zern, also earned the Growth Award for 2010. If you'd like to place an order for a tree, please call Arbor Day Chairman Gladys Weinmore And there's an operative word here, "soon," because we have to make up the various awards. A 15-gallon container tree is $45 and the 24-inch box is $150. And it's such a nice thing to do to honor or memorize somebody in the city. I'm changing my hats to the Women's Civic League. And two of the gentlemen up here are candidates. And the Women's Civic League is holding a forum on February 24th at the Glendale Elks Lodge. We'll have a meeting at 11:30. Lunch is at 12:00. And then we'll have a rousing forum at 12:30. All six candidates will attend and we invite you to attend also. If you have any questions about the forum, call me. This should be a fun forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Mayor.
Evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. To announce the first program in the 11th year of the Author, Artist, and Friend Series. And we're going to have Susan Straight talk about her book, Take One Candle, Light A Room. Susan Straight has been famous nationally for many years. The Washington Post called this book "The Best Novel of 2010." The LA Times, through Hector Tobar, spoke highly of the book. And the New York Times also spoke fairly highly of this book. Now, Susan Straight has been known to anybody who watches national public radio. She's been a commentator on that program for many years. She's also a distinguished teacher at the University of California at Riverside. And she, in 2008, was awarded the Creative Writing Distinguished Award by the university there. This will be a great evening for anybody who's interested in contemporary novels that really dig deep into the problems that families have. And Susan Straight has a way of developing her stories and making them very colorful and interesting and compelling. So on March 17, 7 o'clock, at the Central Library, come and meet Susan Straight. It'll be an enjoyable evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communication, so we'll pick up towards the end of the agenda, second portion. Next item, please.
Item 8, under Action Items. 8A is City Treasurer, regarding City Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Review as of December 31, 2010. At A1 is a motion to file note and file the report.
Brucki.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, pleased to be here this evening to give you a quick report on the status of the city portfolio as of the end of the second quarter, second fiscal quarter of 2011. Let's get right into the numbers. Property tax revenues of, property tax revenues of $15,700,000 boosted the city portfolio dollars to $411 million for the second quarter ending December 31st. This total was $11 million more than the previous quarter ending September 30, 2010. The average rate of return for the quarter was 1.4%, down 13 basis points from the 1.53% of the previous quarter. As the average rate of return dictates earnings, interest earnings for the quarter fell to $1.39 million, down $189,000 from the $1.58 million earned during the previous quarter. As we are at the halfway point through the fiscal year, let's quickly look at some halftime numbers. The year-to-date rate of return for the city portfolio is 1.47% through the end of December with year-to-date earnings at $2,973 million. Let's see, $2,973,000. It's a tad under $3 million. While there is no comfort in these numbers, the good news at this halfway point in the fiscal years that it's beginning to appear that rates have or are about to bottom out. It's too soon, it's still too soon to know if the interest rate ranges will continue to trend higher throughout the year or simply move up, find a level, and then settle there until the Fed takes action. Putting it another way, though, there is very little indication that rates will move lower in the calendar year 2011. I should add at this point that the city portfolio is safe, it's solid, and liquid. Let's quickly turn our attention to the state fund, the local agency investment fund. During the quarter, LEAF continued its three-year slide and averaged 0.46% for the quarter ending December. This was down five basis points from the 0.51% of the previous quarter. We're talking here a range of five basis points around one-half of a percent as a return for the quarter. A positive sign of rates trending upward is that LEAF rates since the end of December have been higher than those of the last quarter. And turning to the economic outlook, the surprising strength in Christmas spending at the end of the calendar year poses a strong challenge to the prevalent view at the end of the previous quarter that the recovery would falter with sluggish spending, weak housing numbers, and fading support from earlier government fiscal measures, meaning that the stimulus funds were drying up. The recent tax agreement between the Obama administration and the Republicans provides somewhat greater tax relief than expected, building business confidence that perhaps is reflected the acceleration of consumer spending. Moody's estimates that GDP growth will average 4% for the year 2011. With a little bit of luck, economic growth at that pace could push the unemployment number down to 9% by the end of the calendar year. It's interesting to note that Fed Chairman Bernanke says job creation is vital for a solid recovery. And I don't think that there's anyone here who wouldn't agree with him that putting America back to work is the key to getting the economy back on its feet. And with that, Mr. Mayor, the City Treasurer's Office recommends the City Council note and file treasurer's report.
Thank you.
Well, you want a motion? Would you like a motion?
I would like a motion. I don't have any cards on the side.
I'll move A1.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Brucki. Item, please.
A B is Director of Community Development regarding update on North Glendale Community Plan. B1 is motion providing direction to staff to proceed with the draft.
Okay. Bruggerini.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the point that staff has released, the first draft of the North Glendale Plan after months of pleasurable, really, we have enjoyed working closely with the community. And after months of discussion with them, this reflects the community's vision and ideas and policies that they wish to see for the North Glendale community. And if the council directs staff, we will continue with the process as scheduled to complete it. There is a staff presentation that the staff will give you if you wish. Otherwise, we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any requests for a detailed staff report?
Pretty thorough.
And what is being distributed are communications that we received this week in support of the North Glendale Community Plan from the residents in the North Glendale community.
I've never got one single negative email on this. Everything is very positive, the direction we're going.
Draymond.
I would agree. I also would just comment that not only has the feedback been positive, that I've received anyway, it's, the only negative is we want to get going. So move on to the next phase, has been the common effort. But also, I want to commend Bruggerini, his department, and also the committee. Because the committee, the community group, put in many, many, many hours. They had a lot to learn about the process and zoning is not an easy topic. So I commend all of them. I had the opportunity to attend one meeting and I was very impressed, both with the level of dedication, but also the very, very insightful questions that were asked. And that made me feel like we were in good hands. So I'm very pleased, Mr. Mayor, and looking forward to moving on to the next step.
Mr. Quintero.
I have a few comments. I think their staff is doing a wonderful job and I actually want to identify them. This work has been done by Tim Foy, who's the Assistant Director of Community Development, Alan Loomis, who is a Principal Urban Designer, and Laura Stotler, who's the Principal Planner. And we've received nothing but operating under the superstar Hassan Hagani. That's why I felt the need to identify them and their positions. They've done a great job and we've received nothing positive feedback, including from people who normally have comments about just about everything. And they, and they seem to be in agreement with what you're doing. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to, I drove up to Latuna Canyon and came down through Foothill. And what I saw in the Tahonda area was just beyond comprehension. I was just stunned. Never mind the old development, but the new development that's taking place was just atrocious. So obviously, their planning commission and their council members and everything else just aren't paying attention to Foothill. But I think we're headed down the right track, the unincorporated area, the Glendale portion of La Crecena, and then finally, La Canyada. I think we're going to have a beautiful boulevard in the years to come. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Well, perhaps if their residents took a more active role in their city, things would be improved, like ours do.
Right, they need to get involved in planning and design on the Glendale Boulevard.
Mr. Friedman.
Yeah, I certainly agree with the comments of my colleagues. I just wanted to add that this is the kind of proactive planning that I think the city really does need to be doing. And this area in particular is really ripe for it because unlike the downtown, which has had extensive documents and extensive planning done, the north part of the city is an area that, as time goes by, will probably be under increasing pressure for development. And this will really lay the groundwork for the community to have a voice and to have input about what kind of development, where should there be development, where should there not be development. And that will also help the developers because they'll know what the community expects. So it's really a protection for the community. It allows the community to have a real say in how they want their city to look in the future. And it'll also give some clarity to people who own property and people who want to build. So it's a great process and I do want to thank the staff and certainly the volunteers from the community who've come forward. You can really tell how much people love that area by the amount of people who wanted to be involved in this process and who've asked us to continue the process. So it's a great thing to see go forward and I look forward to seeing the final results. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond.
Yeah, one, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I did forget to mention is when, when I attended sort of a gathering with the property owners in the unincorporated portion of La Crecena related to the Morton Bay FIG. owners in the unincorporated portion of La Crescent related to the Morton Bay fig issue, it's a 100-year-old tree that was pretty well hat-wrecked, the comment, and this was in the unincorporated area again, the comment from everyone around me was, this is an example of why we need this, why we need to move forward. This would not have happened in Glendale. I kept hearing that over and over. This would not have happened in the Glendale portion of Locust and the Annex, La Crescent portion in the city of Glendale. This is why we need that. So again, good job to our staff, and again, thank you so much to our volunteers on that committee. I mean, Hassan, perhaps you can share with me the kind of hours that were put in? How many meetings this involved? Because I'm not sure even the council is aware of that.
About, I think, one and a half dozen meetings, and each meeting would take about three hours plus. In addition, that would be after the two weeks of preparation that we would, that our staff would take after getting comments from the previous meeting, because this was an ongoing work in progress with the help of the community. And I might add that since the community from outside Glendale has been mentioned, we've had the benefit of having several people who are actually not Glendale residents but are residents of the Crescent Valley, who feel very close to this, have also participated and given input, and we have had the benefit of their participation as well.
In other words, as much, as many as 54 hours were spent by the community group. Really something.
Thank you. I have a card from Mike Mohill.
Name is Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale, city watchdog. I'd like to compliment the residents north of the Foothill area. My problem is, why did it take so long? Why couldn't this been done years ago? If we had a councilman in that particular district, I'm sure that person would have organized that community and gone to this city council and say, hey, look, I want Foothill Boulevard made beautiful, not years later. Just like we need a councilman in South Glendale for Adam Square or for the Pacific Park area. The park was, the pool was destroyed in 2003, and now in 2011, we're finally getting around to it. Ranchel area of Glendale, Riverside Drive is crumbling. Potholes are all over the place. Mr. Zern has his men patch it. Where's a councilperson for that district? La Canyada Boulevard is, also needs repairs. If there was a councilperson for that district, attention would be taken there. But the way the present system has worked out, who speaks for each area of town? Glendale is not like it was when I came to this town back in the '50s. We have now, we've gone from 100,000 people of diversified interests to over 200, different cultures, different interests, different business interests. We're not homogeneous anymore, and the council should also represent the interest of every section of the town. Right now, our five councilpeople unfortunately do not represent other parts of town. Council district would be one thing I hope this council considers after the 2000, excuse me, the 2011 election. Again, I want to salute the people who worked hard to make in their area town look the way they want it to be, and salute you again. Again, I'm for council districts. My name is Mike Mohill. Thank you.
Thank you. My only question, Mr. Hagani, is what will the end result of this process be? Will we have a, are we rezoning? Are we creating?
We're doing three products. One is the general plan portion of North Glendale that sets the guiding policies for land use and all the other affiliated policy issues for the entire area. The second piece will be some zoning changes that have come as a result of the policy directions that we have gotten our clues from the community, and a set of design guidelines for the various parts of the area that will help the design review process in the designer review boards. So three important products come out of this.
Because I know there's a lot of very, I don't want to use the word contentious, but a lot of issues that bring out a lot of emotion, like median down Foothill Boulevard, for example, or heights on the south side or north side versus Foothill, and setbacks and things like that. Will your group get into that nitty-gritty and?
Yes, we have gotten into the nitty-gritty, and those are all parts of the general plan portion, because there are elements of the general plan which are the mobility element, and then there is the open space element. So all of the associated discussion items will be having their own place and will be part of the general plan framework. And the zoning piece will only be associated with the private property in various parts where we change the zoning.
All right, so the process is moving forward.
That's right, and there's a bicycle master plan and ideas for future transit, et cetera, that will.
You? There's no other comments, I'll take a motion.
Comment first, we owe a lot to Mr. Hagani, because in my 14 years, we've gone through other rezoning issues over time, and there's been nothing but controversy, people out here. Hassan, and the team he's built is what has made this go so smooth so far, so far. I hope it goes the whole way that way. And to make a motion, it's very kind of Mr. Mohill to make a campaign speech up here, had nothing to do with what we're discussing, but I guess we can expect nothing more, nothing less from Mr. Mohill. With that, I'll move A-B-1.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Ajarian?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is 8C, Director of Administrative Services regarding second quarter financial update and adjustment to the adopted 2010-2011 budget. C-1 is motion to note and file report. At C-2 is resolution of appropriation amending the adopted 2010-11 budget.
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we have Mr. Elliott here from our finance department. If you would like a quick report on the second quarter financial update.
How quick is quick?
Quick is, is less than two or three minutes. We have about eight slides that are rather quick to go through. Yes.
Okay. Take it.
Five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present our second quarter financial update. Briefly wanted to touch upon results through the second quarter, describe the second quarter adjustment, which is just one, and go over the challenges that we're looking at for the upcoming budget year. Where we're at in the second quarter is revenues are up a little bit from last year. At the same time, although they're still a little bit under our budget, about three and a half million less than we would like to have based off our current trends. We'll monitor those. We've developed some new reports and tracking tools to monitor those, and I'll get into the detail of that in a minute. Our expenditures are trending very well. We're well under 50%, although it's not exactly a straight line throughout the year. We're about 47.4%, which is even less than we were last year. We continue to have a very hard hiring freeze currently. As of today, there's about 88 vacant positions in the general fund. Those savings are anywhere from $4 to $7 million, depending on how quickly, if we fill any positions throughout the year. So right now, we're not proposing any changes at this time. We think the expenditures will come in under what our revenues are, although revenues are down a little bit. Let me get into that. We've broken it down in our major categories. Where we are with property taxes, Mr. Bruckey said, we got our large payment in December. We get two large payments every year, one in December, one in April, and then a sprinkling of payments throughout the year with a cleanup far into August. So we're actually a little bit ahead of last year in that regards. Sales tax is trending up a little bit, although it looks like it'll be slightly less than what we've budgeted. We've met with our sales tax consultant. They think the activity is starting to look up a little bit. They coined a new phrase for some of the increased activity. They called it frugality fatigue. People are getting tired of trying to save money, so they're going out and actually buying different things. Our car sales are doing better than they have been for quite some time. Our charges, charges for services, you can see the other categories, revenue from other agencies. Last year at this point, we were considerably less. I think we were about 30, 35.9, so we're actually ahead of last year on our revenues. This is our breakdown by departments in the general fund. You can see the adopted appropriations and the expenditures. Obviously, straight line would be 50%. The departments are doing very, very well. You can see that the total is 47.4%. Last year, we were about 48%, 48.4% at this point in time. So we're actually doing better this year in saving money. If you straight-line this, doubled it, we come in at about $164 million, which is obviously considerably less than the appropriated amounts. So at this point in time, we're not asking for any adjustments in the general fund. There is one adjustment for the Cable Access Fund. If you recall, last year, we had the JPA and the Financing Authority and created a lease between the JPA and the, or the Financing Authority and the general fund. So this is just asking for additional appropriation in the Cable Access Fund to pay the general fund revenue that we have established for it. Our challenges are many. It's no secret our purse costs are going up. We have approximately $3.9 million in additional purse costs forecasted for next year. That's before any employee cost sharing, which we're assuming will remain in place. As the action you took last week, we're trying to deal with the impact of the loss of the water transfer to the general fund. As we've discussed numerous times, when we delivered the CAFR and previously, the deficits that we have in our internal service funds, primarily our worker comp and some of our benefit funds, the arrangement we made with our auditors, since it was noted in our management letter, was to make, do increases. We've tried to structure those to where we do a little bit each year for six years, so there's going to be increases there. We have natural cost increases. Our first quote from our insurance increase for medical insurance is up about 12%. That's, we're still negotiating with our broker on that, but those are just natural cost increases. Economy, as Mr. Bruckey noted, is slowly recovering, but it's not keeping up with our increases in costs. We still have roughly unemployment around 10%, I think, as Mr. Bruckey noted, and that tends to impact the amount that we get in both sales tax. If I neglected to mention, our property tax is up about 1.3% on assessed valuation, although last year we experienced somewhat of an abnormal delinquency factor with people not paying their property taxes. So we're monitoring that as well, but data from the county is quite slow. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Just a comment, that's, anybody that's prepared budgets for years knows that you're playing a guessing game, what's going to transpose in the coming year, and it's very hard to hit it right on when things happen and the economy and things we're not expecting throws it off and makes preparer of the budget look poor, not doing the job. Based on what I'm seeing so far, it's been a very good job. It's just hard to predict what's happening with the economy, the return. That's unpredictable. You can get in within, I bet you, four or five percent, you're doing pretty good. Keep it up.
I have a question, Mr. Elliott. You saw the slide on the expenditures, we're at 47% year-to-date, I think, urged by that. But go to the slide before that, the income, we're way down.
Yeah, that's a normal pattern. Sales tax, we get a payment every month, but the property tax, we don't get, we get the first payment in December, so it lags a lot on the revenue side. There's still, this is more on a cash basis, so we do still have some accrual reversal. So our revenues tend to be more backloaded at the end of the year. So we're actually ahead of last year at this point.
I have a card from Herbert Milano.
Aaron Ajarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. This report on the halfway point results of revenues and expenses highlight a couple of things for me. If you were to look at page 3 or 6 of your report, there's something interesting here concerning some of the statements made that I think we should all pay attention to, even though property taxes are on the increase, people are having a lot of difficulty meeting those property taxes. No surprise there. But at the end of the paragraph, it says, however, it will be slightly lower than the original estimate. At the end of paragraph number two, with regard to sales tax, it says it will be lower than our original estimates. Paragraph three, on charges for services, the revenue will be lower than originally estimated. On the use of money and property, meaning the interest rates, have been revised downward. On the utility users' tax has been revised downward. On the occupancy franchise taxes have been revised downward. The revenues are all heading downward. But if you flip the other page, and when you see general fund expenditures, the expenditures are tracking as anticipated. In other words, you set the expenditures in your budget, they're going just as if nothing were happening on the revenue side, meaning that you really need to take a look very, very carefully as to what's happening to your general fund expenditures. So if you flip the page and you figure out, well, which department is not, should we say, aligning to that reality, fire department. It's right there on page 5 or 6. Towards the bottom of the page, you also see the city's facing significant increases in retirement and other benefit costs. No surprise there. I would like to know, and I would imagine the public would like to know, how much would it be for the next few years? If you look at, on your CAFR on page 76, you find that the expected projections for the purse rate for police and fire will be 36.4% of their base personable wages. You know, that's up from 25% now. So what does that mean in terms of millions of dollars of additional costs that the city's going to have to bear in the next few years? I think that we need an explanation so that you're all fully apprised of the impact that the pensions are having now and that it will have in the next few years. Thank you very much.
I don't have any other cards.
I can answer, respond to Mr. Milano's questions. He is correct, purse costs are going up. Our rate for miscellaneous is going up from 11.6 to 15.6, and our rate for safety is going from 25 to 30.31%. We are aware of those increases. They will be a challenge, and they will be going up the following years forecasted by purse. That said, we have offsets with our employee groups to pick up portions of those costs. Our net impact, as I had on the slide, is about $3.8, $3.9 million before the employee cost sharing, so it will be an impact, there's no question. Purse is trying to recover from the 24% loss they had several years ago, so that impacts the rates actuarially. It's about two-year lag. They have recovered significantly. They lost a huge portion of their asset base down to about $160 billion. As of last time I looked, which was a week or two ago, they're back up to about $228 billion. They've had very positive returns. I think they're about 11% this year. Their expected rate of return is a 7.75%, so they're doing better than their actuarial model. However, they have to recoup the losses that they sustained several years ago, so our rates will be going up. So we are aware of that.
Okay, so here's, here's my question. As, as our anticipated revenues are lagging slightly than budgeted, but our expenditures are on, seem, appear to be close to being on target, at what point do we make adjustments, and in what form do those adjustments?
Well, we've discussed that. I think for this year, we will be fine with the hiring freeze we have in place, because freeze we have in place, because that will generate, you know, anywhere from four to six billion dollars in savings. So, we're pretty confident that this year, we'll be okay. That said, we felt pretty confident last year. Things happen in the economy that we can't project, although, given the numbers we see, we're pretty confident the way things are going. Next year, it's going to be a struggle. We have been asking departments to put through different scenarios in preparation for this upcoming budget, and we will delve into those at the study sessions. We haven't seen the numbers yet. Obviously, there's our cost increases with not the revenue to back it up, so it will be, it will be a challenge.
What we're here to do is try and meet those challenges, tough for decisions. Okay, don't have any other cards?
Move eight, see one or two. Second?
Call call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yes. Next item?
Next item is Director of Human Resources regarding establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale. At D1 is resolution amending GCA and GCA confidential classifications. At D2 is resolution amending GMA and GMA exempt classifications. D3 is resolution amending executive level classification.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'll go to Matt Doyle, Director of Human Resources, to give you a brief summary of what we're requesting this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the item before you are amendments to the classification and compensation resolution. This action will establish four new employment classification titles within our list of classifications and modify the compensation of one additional title. Want to emphasize that tonight's action does not create new budgeted positions, merely new titles. All of the proposed transactions tonight involve existing budgeted positions. Some are vacant, some are filled, but essentially, the, most of these have to do with just modification or realignments, reorganizations within various departments, the largest being the recent action involving community development. I can go through each of these, these changes one at a time, or if you want to take them as a group, whatever the desire of the council happens to be, so.
My commotion. Minor.
These are reclassifications, not creating any more budget.
That is correct. These are new titles to meet the needs of various departmental issues. And there is one, one classification within the city clerk's office that will be getting a small adjustment.
I'll move A, D1, two, and three.
Second? I do have a card, but we'll accept the motion and the second, and we'll address the vote after the speaker. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. This particular agenda item coming in the heels of the previous one, I think highlights part of the problem that you all face. The real question here, I believe, should be, will the overall gross payroll amount increase? And, because I believe that when you set up these particular adjustments, they're never mentioned as increases or decreases. They simply say adjustments to the payroll. It's a euphemism for the, what I believe has always been an increase. Towards the end of your packet of this particular section, you find a chart with multiple steps, and some of them go up through eight steps, even though there's a step nine for, for some of these positions. And what I think is that when we're given the, the message that there are all these vacant positions, or that there'd be a freeze, I have a question. Is there a freeze for the individuals to jump from step to step? In other words, if, if an employee is at step number two, and then they're moved to step number four, wouldn't that necessarily be an increase in the pay? I think it does mean that. And so, I have been looking for the past few years at the W3, that's the, the payroll report given to the IRS on the total payroll. And he has increased each and every single year significantly. And so, when I look at these type of reports, and we're telling us that, you know, there's going to be a freeze, or that there are vacant positions, the term vacant position means vacant positions if we were to get our wish to fill out all of these additional positions. But we've had a significant increase in the number of employees for the past ten years, especially middle management. So, the other area that is not covered in this, in this reports, is the, is that ratio of supervisors and managers to employees. For example, in the police department, the ratio is one to five, or I mean, one out of five is a supervisor. In the fire department, it's one out of four. And so, I think that looking at your ratio of managers and supervisors to the, to the rank and file, I think is pertinent. In the private sector, the most profitable productive companies have a ratio of one to fifteen, one supervisor manager for every fifteen people. And I know, even though this is a service industry as such, service organization, I think you ought to look at those ratios as a way of assessing whether we are top-heavy. I think we are. Thank you.
You. I don't have any other cards. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Call call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item will be returning to oral communication, where discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the city manager mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. First speaker is Charles Hooker, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mayor, city councilman, my name is Charles Hooker, one of the few natives of Glendale. What I want to know is, why does Glendale need, in addition to its mall that we already have, approximately a quarter of the place is empty? Majority of the people in Glendale are tired of all the construction and the new little projects going on in Glendale. Glendale was never designed to have a population like it has now, or the number of condos, or the Glendale traffic, with all of our new residents racing around in their BMWs and their Mercedes. Glendale needs a good hotel, or a large motel, where visitors to the city of Glendale can stay in comfort without being gouged by the house, high cost of rent, or whatever you want to call it, overnight stay. We have a motel now. Why change? Another thing I'm curious about is the kickback by our current council, city council, who was in the paper the other day, another gentleman was named. I don't know if our council has what's going on, but, or the Glendale news press has something to do, doesn't care for some of our council, or what. And so, what I'm here to say is, if you're not pleased with our current council, please vote on April the fifth for some new council personnel. We need a mayor of choice, not chance, and we cannot do it alone. We need all of our citizens of Glendale to get out and vote. They can leave their popcorn and whatever they're doing for one day to go out and vote. That's one of your God-given rights. Thank you.
You. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. For many years, when I was looking at the city's financial reports, it did not really come to light as clearly that, when you look at these financial reports, oftentimes, you're looking at a snapshot, especially on the major reports. Even though the beginning pages of the financial reports, you do see some trends, but they tend to be small charts. So, I undertook this process of looking back at the city's history with regard to taxes, expenditures, so that if I look at a trend line, it will give us an idea of what the problems really are. So, I've brought up a PowerPoint, not too many slides, but I want to at least address a couple of things concerning what has happened to our property taxes, and what has happened to some of our expenditures. So, I went back to look at the property taxes from nineteen-seventy-eight to the year twenty-ten. It's a mixture of some of the budgets, and sometimes, I only had access to a preliminary budget. And then, I, during the last few years, since I didn't have the budgets accessible, so I used the numbers from the CAFR. But take a look at the next page, please. We have had several statements throughout the last few years concerning Proposition thirteen, has it constraints Glendale property tax revenues? So, why don't we do a comparison of the inflation rate versus the property tax rate for, since nineteen-seventy-eight, when Proposition thirteen passed? Next slide, please. Well, since nineteen-seventy-eight, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the change in the rate of inflation has been two-hundred-and-thirty-four percent. During the same period of time, the property tax rate changed, versus the revenues is at eleven-hundred percent. Next page. And here it is, graphically located. Now, in nineteen-seventy-eight, according to two different reports, it was either six-point-seven or six-point-one million dollars. But nonetheless, what you see is a significant growth. There are some areas of stability around the nineteen-nineties. But suddenly, the year two-thousand, we had a humongous exponential growth in the property tax revenues. We are now at over eighty million dollars. In other words, if we had this incredible infusion of income, why are we having such difficulty, you know, balancing the books? Next slide, please. So, I took a look at the Glendale government salary and wage trends. I haven't updated it. I've yet to receive some documents from the California Public Records Act, but let's take a look. Next. Well, here it is. Glendale wages, including the deferred wages from using the W3, the report given to the federal government, there it is, from under a hundred million in two thousand, you know, to nearly a hundred-and-fifty million in two thousand and eight. There's your problem. Now, this is a combination of salaries and wage increases plus additional staffing. Next page. Well, so here is the, a document with regard to those eight years. Inflation rate was twenty-four percent. Population increased by three-and-a-half percent. The combined of those two, which is a GAN limitation, that you basically have a report on the financials, is twenty-five percent. A payroll increased by fifty percent, pension increases by three-hundred percent, and medical insurance expenditures by five-hundred. There are the problems. If you had a system, you could drill down into those, you'd be able to get a sense of what is taking place. Next slide. Okay. Mid-management employees. There it is, as clear as anything. You had a hundred-and-sixty-seven in nineteen-ninety-nine, you're up to two-hundred-and-thirty-three in two thousand and eight. So, when someone says, we're going to be cutting staff, or we have fewer employees than last year, we're ignoring the fact that during the, during the eight-year period, an increase of forty percent. This information comes from the workforce demographic reports. They are available online. You can just type in Glendale demographics and put in the particular year. So, I gladly bring back to you any of this data support in these documents, but it's right there for you to see it online. And I think that's where the constraint really is, the trends in employment, pension increases, benefit increases that have been exponential, and that's, therein, the constraints that we have. So, when we have a problem with regard to our budget, what gets cut? Libraries. They're the smallest portion of our, of our, of our budget. You know, so, youth programs, after-school programs, things that basically would help the community, that would actually even reduce some of the police expenses, they, those get cut. They don't, they aren't considered. And I think we need to have a reevaluation of those particular trends that gives us a much better picture of what has happened in Glendale in the past ten years. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mike Mohill, followed by Hazel Catmull.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, Mike Mohill, City watchdog. Councilman Weaver, is it true, as far as, everything I say is that, because I'm running for Glendale City Council? Everything I say. Well, why don't you own up for the things you've done for our city? You keep talking about the budget, for example, and the economy. I've been coming to this council for over three years with my flyers about headline news, the economy is sinking, 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 and you keep giving the city employees pay raises, and also, you give them nice fat pensions. Let's talk about a pension. I talked about that last week. Here's the gentleman by the name of Christopher Gray, a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year. Hello, knock, knock. I had to come to this council to complain about East Glen Oaks Boulevard. Everybody says, Mr. Weaver lives in East Glen Oaks Canyon, and he takes care of us. Really, Mr. Weaver? How come it was my, me? My wife and I knocking on doors, telling the neighbors, come down here and ask them, ask you people, please fix our street. Thank you, Mr. Zerrin. You had your crew out in about a week later and started fixing potholes. Unfortunately, we need more than this, a pothole repair. Mr. Zerrin told me that in about another year or two, we should have our street resurfaced. Well, as far as I know, there's nothing left in the capital fund budget. Where is all that money going to? Surprise, right here, pensions and salaries. Now, let's talk about why I came here this evening. I want to talk about a report that I received a couple of months ago in the, in the, online. It was a letter from the city manager's office to a Miss Nancy Miller, Stacy Miller, Public Affairs, and the city wanted her to make a beautiful report on the city budget. I'm going to quote here, "Miss Miller firm was being paid two-thousand dollars to prepare a story in easy-to-understand language with colorful pictures illustrating the current budget." Well, folks, if you go to the Glendale library, you'll see this report. It's very pretty. Glendale is doing a wonderful job, colorful, but you know what, folks? It doesn't tell the true story of the city. We got roads that are declining. We got high utility bills. Our water bills keep going up. Our trash fees go up. The budget isn't balanced. The budget in the last ten years has gone from four-hundred million to eight-hundred million. The debt has gone up to three-hundred million. And we have over a hun, over a billion dollars in unfunded liabilities. So, that, folks, this report from the city manager's office is garbage. And if you want to see more garbage, I have of it. It's, it's paid by us taxpayers. We tax paid, paid for this report that doesn't paint a true story. The city manager's office prepared it. The city council had to approve it also, unless I'm surprised, Mr. Mayor. But this is a report that I had to pay, I had to read this, and I'm saying to myself, where's the truth in advertising? I had some classes in accounting and business finance when I went to college, but you know what? There's a thing called government financing, and there's a thing called hocus-pocus financing, magic. Try and read the financial statements. You need a CPA degree, and the CPA, he's a CPA and his lawyer to understand it. Thank God, we have Mr. Milano, who has the background to understand it and present it to the public. I learn something from Mr. Milano every week I come here. I don't learn it from the city staff. They just go over my eyes. Mr. Weaver, yes, whenever I speak here, you'll be thinking, I'm running for Glendale City Councilman. Yes, and I'd like to replace you one day. Thank you. Mike Mohill, City watchdog. Councilman to be, I hope. Thank you.
Just like to point out that ripping the newspaper in half is my shtick, and I think I need to do credit when that is done. Hazel Catmull, followed by Harry Zavos.
Mayor Councilman, I would like to speak to about eminent domain, which I'm sure you're sick of hearing about, and the proponents are now talking to each other. It is, Glendale has become very unpopular over this. It's in all the newspapers and on the local, not only the local news, Los Angeles news. I believe it was a bad move. If you want, Caruso is not going to take the blame for it. You all are. And you look very, very bad to a lot of people. And it's a shame, because I think you mean well, but it's not the way to do it. Everybody knows what eminent domain means, and that property was not blighted to the extent of some of the other properties in Glendale that you don't bother about. I suggest that you really, no matter what happens, you stay out of it. I suggest that you really, no matter what happens, you stay out of it, and let Caruso and Patel do their own work. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Zavos.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm the resident of Glendale. I think that last week, those of us who have expressed concerns over water fee transfers to the general fund were treated shabbily from the dais. I think words are put in our mouths that were not our words. We were accused of trying to accomplish things that we never intended to accomplish. Our motives were questioned. I was personally accused of implying that I had asked for cooperation from the staff and had been refused that cooperation. There is nothing that anybody, I think, can point to in what I said or in my demeanor that would support that accusation. Now, I'm not here to go through each one of those instances. I think that's a losing game. What it does is it abstures issues by focusing on personalities. It diverts attention from relevant facts by focusing on rhetorical ploys. It does not advance public discourse. But there is something that arose out of what I had to say that I feel that I have to set straight. I've had what I think has been a mutually respectful relationship with the city attorney over the years. In fact, if you ask him on a number of occasions, when I thought, when I was going to bring up an issue which I thought he may not have given recent consideration to, I would call him and give him a heads up, so he would not be surprised. After last week's meeting, he called me, and even though he admitted that during my comments, he did not feel personally attacked, he said after the meeting, he was told that I was accusing him of preparing an unprofessional report. I think I satisfied him that that's not what I was saying, and I want to satisfy the public and people here that's not what I was saying. I did say that I felt that report was unprofessional, but I said principally on the cost side, not the legal side. I also indicated I wasn't going to address the cost side, where my primary concerns were about unprofessionalism. And the reason I wasn't was because there was a legal issue embedded in a resolution to be considered by the council on that night that I wanted to address, and I did raise it. I asked, why? If the city had concluded to discontinue water transfers beginning in 2012, 13, because they are unconstitutional, why would they, in their resolution, confirm past transfers that are equally unconstitutional, including the one slated for this year? I raised that issue publicly. I received no public response. I reiterate that issue tonight. Now, as to what I said about unprofessionalism and what I said about the city attorney's report, I indicated, one, that I agreed with his conclusion. I indicated I did not necessarily agree with the complexion of his arguments. And in my remarks, I alluded to what the basis for that was. And let me, again, make it clear. The city attorney consistently has indicated that the City of Glendale's charter provision for transfer, unlike the charter provisions of other cities that were the subject of those 218 cases, which the Proposition 218 cases that he reviewed, did not have a mandatory charter provision, as does Glendale. Now, he has consistently felt that that is of importance. I will say this, in his report, he concluded, after reviewing the cases afresh, that that is a difference, but not one which the courts would probably consider makes a legal difference. I, on the other hand, have consistently felt that the character of the charter, be it mandatory or discretionary, is irrelevant. The only relevant question is whether or not it conflicts with 218. So let me make it clear for the city attorney who's not here, I found nothing unprofessional in the review of those cases. I found nothing unprofessional in the conclusion by the city attorney, even though I did disagree on emphasis, particularly with respect to the mandatory character of the charter provision. And let me just say that that is an honest disagreement in terms of that mandatory provision between myself and the city attorney. It doesn't render my exposition unprofessional as a lawyer who may not be practicing, nor does it render what the city attorney did unprofessional.
You? Don't have any other cards? Mr. Weaver?
No comments. In my discussions with the city attorney about you, Mr. Zavos, he has expressed nothing but a very high opinion of you, always, without a doubt. Mr. Mohill, yes, I see Mr. Mohill walking up and down Glen Oaks, some neighbors also see him. It's nice to know Canyon that I've lived in all my life, over 71 years, think I'm helping them. I remember being the president of the homeowner association. I remember creating the secondary ridge line ordinance, keeping the Sleepy Hollow subdivision within a bowl, setbacks on Glen Oaks Boulevard, so houses couldn't be up to the curb. I can think of a lot of things I've done for my canyon in the years, and I'm very grateful to hear that people living in the canyon do think that of me. Thank you.
You?
Okay, before we move on to our new business, I just want to say something that I forgot to mention during council comments. I tried to be a mayor for peace. There were a couple of residents that came up and said, "Be a mayor for peace, just go to the website, click on it." Well, unfortunately, it's not that great. Needs a resolution of the city council, so we have to be a council for peace. Well, if there's no objection, we'll put that.
Peace between the five of us?
Regarding nuclear proliferation.
Oh, that kind.
Does that mean we have?
It started by the mayor of Hiroshima.
So do we have to resolve not to have any nuclear weapons in Glendale?
I would ask staff to basically research what exactly committed to that resolution would entail, and then we'll just have a short discussion about it. I did, it's not, I can't just click on it and do that.
We could be a mayor for peace.
They need a resolution.
We'll treat the nodding heads as a second to bring that.
Is there a second?
You could be a mayor for peace if we all agree that you are.
Well, it'll be a council for peace, I think.
Even better.
Even better. Okay, that will close that section. Do we have new business?
Draymond?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that the lawsuit entitled Patricia Reber, I think it's Reber, Reber versus City of Glendale, case number EC046328, be compromised and resolved for the full and complete sum of $77,850, and the same is hereby approved and accepted, and the finance director is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum payable to Patricia Reber and law offices of David J. Shapiro for a delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Is there a second? Call call, please.
Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Tarrell?
Yes.
Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, since I was not at the meeting, I will abstain.
Herr Najarian? Yes. Right of passes.
Move re-adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.